Good afternoon. Welcome to our March meeting of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education Board of Trustees. Glad you all could make it today. We are first going to, we have one of our board members that has requested to meet with us remotely. He's had a family emergency. And so would... Oh, okay. Maybe by the end of the year, I'll get this down pat. First of all, could we establish the quorum?
Yes. Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Here.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Alta. Trustee Estrada.
Here.
Trustee Nichols.
Here.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Van Allen.
Here.
President Roth.
Here.
Okay. Just kind of skipped a step. Next, would one, someone like to make a motion on...
So we were notified that Ed Acosta, trustee Ed Acosta, has an emergency circumstance and is requesting the ability to be able to connect remotely in compliance with AB 2449. Would require a motion and approval by the board.
I would so move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Bruce Van Allen and seconded by Edward. So does this actually rule? Okay. All those in favor, first of all, Oscar. Are you in favor or not?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? So Ed Acosta will be joining us on Zoom. See him up there on the screen. Now, Dr. Sabah, if you'd lead us in pledge of allegiance.
Stand if you can, face the flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do we need this air thing on?
Okay. It's, do I have a motion on the approval of the agenda? I have a motion.
I'll second.
Sandra?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second on approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oscar?
Aye.
I just, I mean, I'm so into being on this board that I'm not recognizing that you are a student instead of an adult or voted in member or whatever. So anyway, thank you, Oscar. Public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items outside the agenda. The board president will recognize any member of the audience not previously placed on the agenda who wishes to speak on a matter directly related to school business. Each speaker on any specific topic may speak up to three minutes unless otherwise limited or extended by the president. The president may allot time to those wishing to speak, but no action will be taken on matters presented. That's under California Ed Code 3514 5.5. If appropriate, the president or any member of the board may direct that a matter be referred to the superintendent's office for placement on a future agenda. The consent agenda. I think it's two meetings in two days here has done me in, unfortunately. Again, I'm sorry. Are there any people that would wish to speak in public comment?
We have, we don't have any requests for public comment.
Okay. Okay. The consent agenda. These are all recommended actions that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one motion. Specific items may be removed for consideration. And if they are removed, it will be considered immediately following the consent agenda motion under deferred consent. Do I have a motion?
Move adoption of the consent agenda with gratitude for the gifts that were mentioned.
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. All, and again, much gratitude for the gift that we did receive. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oscar?
Aye.
I think I should just walk out and then come back in and, you know, take a deep breath outside. So, okay. So we have passed that motion. We have no deferred consent items. Correspondence. Have we received anything that relates?
No correspondence, President Roth.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Our first report is labor negotiations. Sunshine the California School Employees Association, SCEA, Chapter 484, proposed changes to four articles within the 2425 Classified Employee Bargaining Unit Agreement to the Santa Cruz County Superintendent of Schools.
President Roth, trustee Acosta has arrived to the meeting.
Welcome, Ed.
Hello, thank you.
Yes, it's my pleasure to welcome our wonderful CSEA representatives. We have our president Rory Bruce, who is the president of CSEA and accompanied by Michelle Ricks and LaDon Holiday. Welcome. Thank you so much for being here and thank you for all the amazing work. We have so much appreciation for our classified team and the strong partnerships we have to work together and on behalf of students across the county. Thank you for being here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ferris, thank you for your kind words. And I think one of the most important things that I'd like to share with the board is how close we have worked together through the years, through good years and more difficult years. When challenges faced us like COVID, we've always been able to work through whatever issues that we faced. Our ability to dialogue, communicate, listen to one another have been the hallmarks of the relationship with our union and with our administration. We deeply appreciate that. We worked really hard to do that. This year, we have, as, first of all, President Roth, thank you for allowing us here, all members of the board. Thank you so much for allowing us here today. And I really wanted to mention that I'm really pleased to see Mr. Alvarez here today. This is amazing and awesome to see a student on the board and how distinguished that is. And I just really appreciate that and seeing that today. So what we are proposing this year is to open four articles. This is a, what we call a successor negotiation, which means that our three-year contract is ended and we're going to be starting a new contract that will be effective for July 1st of this year and terminate on June 30th of 2027. For that reason, we're opening up Article 2, which is term. So we need to change the terms of this. As every year we do, even in off years, even, we do Article 11, which is pay and allowance. We'll be working closely with the administration to negotiate a fair and equitable wage increase for our bargaining unit. We're also, as we do every year, we're going to be opening up Article 12, which is health and welfare benefits. We do this every year. We review, make sure that whatever we have in place now or what we want to propose is discussed. Also, we're going to be bringing up this year Article 23, compensation for training. We have an interest in negotiating language to better reflect working conditions for our bargaining unit members in relationship to training hours at the beginning of the year. In addition to that, opening those four articles, we have an interest in updating the contract language to remove old and outdated terms. You know, we've had contract stuff that's listed there for years and years. So we want to just clean up the contract a little bit. Going along with that, we also want to, we have an interest in changing the terms of the collective bargaining unit to be gender neutral. And we've made strides in doing that, but we've had some suggestions on ways we can further do so. So we'll be introducing that as well this year, negotiations. Finally, we reserve the right to add, delete, or modify these proposals as determined through the entire negotiation process. So that's what we wish to do. We're excited. We have some dates set up next month to begin the negotiation process. And we really look forward to that process again this year and reaching a successful contract. So thank you. Any questions from anyone? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Rory.
Okay, Oscar. Moving on to labor negotiations, sunshining with the Santa Cruz County Employees Association, CSEA. And...
Yes, so in the same, you know, the sunshining process requires both the labor representatives as well as the county office of education to sunshine the different components of the, of the contract that we want to discuss. And I'll ask our deputy superintendent, Leen Reyes, to sunshine these items first.
Thank you. I don't have as smooth as a voice as Rory. He's got the most amazing, smooth voice out there. You can coach me, Rory, okay? I love when he speaks. It's wonderful. He just draws you in. So the RADA Act requires that parties negotiating a collective bargaining agreement to give public notice of their proposals at a public meeting, which Rory just did. So by sunshining those proposals in this fashion, we are now, as the Santa Cruz County Office of Education, announcing our intent to negotiate with the California School Employees, Chapter 484, CSEA. A lot of the articles that we are opening are very similar to the same articles the union has brought forward. We wish to address language in the preamble in order to review and make that current. We also wish to look at Article 2, which is term. And Rory gave a beautiful, perfect explanation about the reasons why behind that, so I won't repeat. Our reasons are the same. We also wanted to look at Article 10, holidays, as a new holiday was previously negotiated and added to the table, Juneteenth. So we just wanted to clean that up, which would just result in some minor formatting issues. We wish to look at Article 11, the proposal to negotiate possible revisions to the language related to pay and allowances will be done in order to promote competitive salaries and to balance this effort with maintaining fiscal solvency. Additional clarifying revisions to the language related to pay and allowances will also be done. Health and welfare, negotiation to look at possible revisions to the language related to health and welfare benefits will be done also in order to promote competitive salaries and to balance this effort with maintaining our ongoing fiscal solvency. Lastly, we would like to look at Article 14, leaves. The proposal to negotiate possible revisions to the language related to leaves will be done in order to incorporate current law into the collective bargaining agreement. And that concludes the articles that we're planning to open. If all articles are agreed on by both parties, they will be voted and ratified by the CSEA Chapter 484 and then approved by Santa Cruz County Office of Ed.
Thank you. Any questions? Ed?
Not now. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I've covered everyone. Thank you. Next, item 7.3. We're going to have a discussion and review and report out from the Santa Cruz COE 2024 STEAM Exposition Expo.
Yes, it is my pleasure to welcome a few guests, which I'll do in a moment. But before I do that, I would like to, I'm not sure if any of you had the opportunity to drop by the expo this year. But this was an idea that Heather Wiegand and our Ed Services team had been working on for quite some time, which was the idea of taking what was the science fair and really creating a celebration, an opportunity to showcase students' talent in STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And the idea was really to provide a broader scope and a really fun activity that was interactive, that highlighted student skills, both in the arts as well as in the STEM field, and to be able to also connect with different partners. And I think we accomplished that in a beautiful way this year. We were so excited about it. We felt like this would be a project that we wanted to share with you right away. There were hundreds of people that were involved in this work. The Ed Services Department really led the charge and did an outstanding job working with a lot of different partners. You're going to hear a little bit about who was actually involved in the STEAM Expo this year. We just think it's going to be, it is really kind of like the starting point of something that is going to continue to grow and give more and more students the opportunity to be able to listen, learn, and really share their greatness. And so I'd like to welcome, I think Angela, are you going to be presenting today as well? Okay, so our Dr. Angela Meker, our associate superintendent for Ed Services, is going to take the lead maybe and introduce our amazing folks. And I might interject and talk a little bit about these amazing folks.
Can I, I just want to share, I think it's extraordinary that we have a county superintendent who can speak to the events with this much depth. No, not just the acronym. I just want to take a moment, though, and say, you speak to the intent of the event and in part, you were involved with the planning. You were also there the whole day and you even helped load up cars. So I just think I want to take a moment and appreciate Dr. Sabah. Thank you, Dr. Sabah, President Roth, trustees. It's our pleasure to invite up three members of the STEAM Dream Team, Audrey Serota, who's our coordinator for VAPA, Kevin Drinkard, our math coordinator, and Miguel Aznar, who is the lead judge for the science fair. And they're going to be sharing not only the work that went into this, the collaboration, but really the vision. So I'm going to turn it over to them as they're coming up. I do want to mention, it'll help with the framing, that this expo took place at the fairgrounds. It was, it filled the fairgrounds. And it was just very recently, but you're going to hear at the end our plans to keep this moving forward as Dr. Sabah shared. So I'm going to turn it over to our STEAM Dream Team.
Thanks for letting us let you in to this amazing day that we had. Oh. There you go. Go for it. So traditionally, the science fair has drawn from a specific population of students who have more resources available to them in order to design, create, and develop a study, project, or experiment. We see that this lack of access for many of our students causes an inequitable situation. In order to begin to address this, we developed the idea of hosting a STEAM Expo so that every student from across our county could present their interests without having to enter into a competition. So this year, the STEAM Expo brought students, teachers, industry, business, arts, and community partners together to make content learning relevant for all our students. This is a way of actively disrupting systems of inequity. Next slide. This vision is collaborative and it has a history of being a collaborative endeavor. We worked together and created our STEAM Dream Team that involves all of the COE, from superintendent, from the superintendent's office to business, shout out, to tech services, to educational services, to our youth engagement, another shout out, couple there, and many of our community and partners, including Miguel.
Historically, we've offered a fantastic science fair in our county, which in and of itself is very amazing. This year, we nested the science fair within the larger context of the STEAM Expo. We invited 36 businesses or partners, universities, the community. We filled up the Crosetti Building at the, at the fairgrounds. Big building, lots of energy. We had performers. Audrey's going to tell a little bit more about the wide variety of performances. So in the context of science, technology, engineering, art, and math, lots of community partners, lots of hands-on activities. We also had our competitive science fair.
Thank you. As you can see, we had 21 schools participate. And this slide gives you a sense of how wide the range of participation was by the number of students. Anywhere from one student coming from a school up to 22 from Westlake, largely driven by parents getting involved and driving the fairs at those schools. Another way to look at these 21 schools is geographically. And if I press hard enough, maybe? Is it the right arrow, Vernissa? Geographically, here, these are the 22 schools. We were as far north as Boulder Creek Elementary and as far east and south as Watsonville High. The size of the circles gives a sense of how many students were participating from each one. And as you can see, there's quite a density throughout Santa Cruz. A lot of schools where this has been a tradition and some schools where they've newly come to the Science and Engineering Fair. The video will give a sense of what it's like to be there. It's the, the judging circles bring a group of up to six students into a U, we call it a circle, with three judges. The students present to the judges and to each other. It is a social event. It, they spend 90 minutes being judged. And one of the innovations, one of the many innovations this year, was the actual judging circle. So in the past, if you had joined the Science and Engineering Fair, you would have seen students waiting for judges to come and talk to them. And that meant downtime, which always pained me to watch the students looking up at me as I came by, but I was moving on to another project. Now, the students are 100% of the time engaged and not just with judges, but also as with peers. It's a social event where they're sharing with each other and giving ideas, asking questions. And even if their project does not go on to a state, national, or international level, if they've given a suggestion to a project that does, they feel ownership. So it's not just their projects that are succeeding, but it's the community's projects that are succeeding. The expo as a whole is something we've dreamed of for quite a long time. That was one of the big steps we took. The judging circles was another one, which we're demonstrating here. What you can't see is another step was a new rubric that Dr. Heather Wiegand composed from the Next Generation Science Standards, NGSS, the practices of scientists and engineers, melded together with the International Science and Engineering Fair rubric and Invention Convention. This allowed us to much more fairly judge projects when a single judge couldn't see all the projects. We also did a same-day award ceremony. Usually, we take a week or longer to figure out all of the awards and who won and making up the slides. It was quite the ambition to do that all on the same day. It came off and it meant that we didn't have to have students come back with their parents on another day and drive through traffic. It also didn't require us to figure out who was actually receiving an award, because you don't want to drive two hours through traffic, then sit through an hour or two and then not get an award. We had it at 3 o'clock the very same day of the fair and we invited everyone to come and get involved. Our next steps, we are allowed in Santa Cruz County to send on 29 juniors and 11 seniors to the California State Science and Engineering Fair. They'll be competing April 16th in a virtual event. We're allowed to send one competitor, one finalist, and three student observers to the International Science and Engineering Fair. This year, it'll be May 12th through 17th in Los Angeles. Last year, it was in Dallas. Previously, it was in Atlanta. It is a huge deal for the competitor, the finalist, as well as the observers. It is like a rock event, rock star event. I'd like to invite Kevin to talk about the next steps.
It's next door to the building that Miguel was just sharing in that video. In the Crosetti Building, we had our 36 partners set up in such a way that kids could come in, kids and families could come in and engage with something, learning something that they might not have known about before. We have two examples here. We've got a little math festival put on by eight graduate students at UCSA, volunteering their time, transforming their lives, too. Some of them are thinking about becoming teachers. And we also have Watsonville Environmental Science Workshop. These are two of the 36 partners. We had a number of other partners. We had a swimming pool with thousands of gallons of water. We had underwater robots. Joby Aviation was there. Lots and lots of community partners, lots of ways for kids to engage in new ways of thinking and new opportunities. And a lot of art that Audrey's going to talk about.
Arts integration is defined by the Kennedy Center for the Arts as an approach to teaching in which students engage in the creative process which connects an art form and another subject area that meets both standards and objectives in both. To represent the arts, we had our STEAM photo booth with our community partners, Pajaro Valley Arts and Aptos High School. And you can see there's a famous person on the right slide that we were able to get a photo of. And we also had our youth artists taking action group, peopling with Andres Ortiz, peopling the make-your-own-sticker table. Next slide, please. Thank you. And there they are on the left. We had an extraordinary exhibit by the students of San Lorenzo Valley High School who designed and curated the exhibit under the guidance of their teacher, Terry Thompson. They connected the content areas of science, writing, visual arts, and poetry. Next slide. We had 92 students performing at the STEAM Expo, ranging in ages from five to 18 years old. The performances started out with Elsa's stemma, youth symphony, playing for our youngest ballet folklorico dancers led by Ruby Vasquez and the groups called Espeasta Esperanza. Next slide. It was followed on the right by two recitations from Poetry Out Loud, including an original poem by our county winner, Valentina Russell. And following Valentina's very moving original poem about being biracial and navigating her way in the world, we had ballet folklorico dancers from Pajaro Valley High School led by Gabe Johns Robledo, yes, son of Janet Johns. And that's on the next slide, which I'm going to show you in a minute. But there it is. Thanks, Kevin. And then to end the afternoon performances, we had the Aptos High School Choir sing several a cappella pieces led by Jocelyn Levine. And that's on the slide. Sorry, mixed up the photos. Previous, there you go. And there they are on the left. So turn it back over to Kevin.
As Dr. Sabah said, this was our inaugural event. Mark your calendars. We're bringing the show back next year, March 8th, 2025, and really looking forward to it. Thanks for hearing about our presentation.
And if I could add just a few things as...
And if I could add just a few things, as, as our presenters mentioned, just the, the wide scope of people that were involved in the planning and implementation of this, I just have to highlight the Miguel and his work as our lead, as our, as our lead judge, and just being just such a support, creating systems, really. Everything from videos, the, the resources that are available for, for, for the judges to participate in the science fair are just absolutely top-notch, thanks to, thanks to his arrangements. When I think about all of the coordination of the arts and all of the, just the mind-blowing amounts of, of expressions and talent and just beauty that we saw that day, thanks to Audrey Serrano and her coordination with, with all folks, and, and of course, with Kevin helping out with, with all of the, the science components and also helping out with all the day-to-day. These folks were working, helping set up the day before, of course, weeks ahead of time as well, but the day before and the day of, and just the amount of energy and excitement that was brought in. It was exhausting for, for all the folks that were involved and absolutely, and absolute joy. It was such a celebration of, of, of knowledge and curiosity and, and brilliance of our students. So, so excited for next year. Thank you for, for everything, Angela, that the team has, has worked on, everybody that was involved, everybody in the room was actually had, played a part in this. And we are so grateful to, that, that our community had these opportunities to be able to, to, to show their skills and also just to, to enjoy and learn from each other. So thank you so much for, for everything and congratulations on a, on a wonderful STEAM Expo.
Any comments? Bruce.
I can't really top all the compliments, so I just, I did applaud it. I just, this is fabulous, and I want to deeply thank all of you for this. I did have one little thought to plant in your minds, which is, March 8th jumps out at me as long celebrated International Women's Day. And so maybe that could be a layer on the theme for next year. But anyway, thank you so much. This is just really good, really great work, and to Dr. Sabah as well for his leadership.
Any other comments? Ed?
Uh, no, I, I would just add to what Bruce said. I mean, that's, I mean, you guys are doing a phenomenal presentation, by the way, but what great things you're doing there. And it's amazing, some of the things, I mean, just the, the slides you had and seeing some of the kids really involved in some of those, you know, U-shaped presentations and, great job, great job. Thank you.
I just wanted to say it's actually wonderful. I, I know some of the people from the folklorico clubs, and they were telling me a lot about it, and they tell me how amazing it is. I think that, I saw seeing other people from other high schools, too, is actually wonderful, and our age ranges is actually amazing to me. Thank you so much.
I can't tell you how impressed I am with the integration and taking it from something that was very competitive, but it was a narrow group of students that generally were involved. And I can only see the growth that's going to appear. And it makes me very proud of this county and Office of Education for being so forward-thinking in applying so many aspects to STEAM. And the one thing I'd like to say is that I do work up at UCSC, and we have become extremely aware over the past few years of the connection between science and the arts. And they really go hand in hand. And so to bring this down and to the, the level of our K-12 is, is super. So, thank you. And I've got it on my calendar. Thank you. Next, we will have the second interim financial report, 2023-24, and...
Yes, I'm going to be welcoming our deputy superintendent for an equally riveting presentation as the last one. It will be matched in enthusiasm, color, and excitement.
I'd like to advocate for a different order next time, please.
But, so this is our second interim report, which is, of course, an important milestone in our process, our, our budgeting process. And so we'll turn it over to, to Leanne to take it away.
Thank you, and I'm glad I didn't totally clear the room. My business peeps. Exciting. Okay, well, we're here to talk about tonight's second interim report, and of course, the most important thing is a huge thanks to our internal business services team. And that's, if you don't already know, it's Ms. Melissa Lopez, Michelle Kennedy, Tara Lee, Brooke Rosso, Natia Ambrosi, and Shay Sexton. So we, we wouldn't have all of this amazing information for you if it weren't for the hard work of this group of folks. So tonight's, or this afternoon's discussion will be looking at our budget and reporting processes, an overview of the 2324 second interim report, key differences between what we last reported to you at first interim and where we now are with second interim, our multi-year projections, what's next? That's the exciting part to wait for, huh? And any recommendations? So this next slide will be very familiar to most of you, but for some of our newer folks, maybe for Oscar and for Edward, I just wanted to bring it in again to show you where we are in the annual reporting cycle. We start off with our budget adoption, which has to happen no later than July 1st. And after that, we come in with a 45-day revise after the governor actually adopts his budget. The first interim tells you activity that's happened through October 31st. And then what we have highlighted right there in yellow is where we are today, the second interim, and that's going to be capturing activity through January 31st. Next, I can't believe I'm actually saying this, but the next cycle is we start looking at closing the books and our estimated actuals and where we think we're going to actually end up the year, right around the corner. And at the same time, we're working on our 2425 budget adoption. So none of us in the business department are allowed to say last year, this year, next year. We now have to talk in numbers, 2324, 2425, 2526. What year are you talking about? That's our golden rule, otherwise we cry. And usually, I'm the first one who breaks the rule. After that, we have our unaudited actuals, which we will bring to you in October, so that you'll have that to look forward to, and then our audit, as soon as our auditor's able to finish it, but generally, that's in the December timeframe. So second interim is actually an opportunity for the COE to make any adjustments in our budget based on the snapshot of where we actually are right now and where we think we're going to be going into the end of the year. So it's super important to always remember that on these interim cycles, it really truly is a snapshot based on thoughtful consideration and assumptions. So there are three classifications of certification. We must certify our budget. A positive certification is when your entity will be able to meet its financial obligations for the current and two subsequent years. Qualified certification is if you may not meet your financial obligations for the current or two subsequent fiscal years. And then a negative certification is assigned to entities that will be unable to meet its financial obligations for the remainder of the current year or for the next subsequent fiscal year. So last time, I know I had like the cute little, cute little guys from Despicable Me at the bottom, but today, we're going to go with a smiley face and a thumbs up and say that we will be once again filing a positive certification for our 2324 second interim. And what that positive certification means is that we will be able to end the current and two subsequent years with positive ending cash. That's a huge consideration when you're talking about certification status. Positive cash, positive fund balances, not only in our general school, county school service fund, which is Fund One, at the end of 2526, but as well as maintaining a 5% reserve in our special reserve fund, also known as Fund 17, and also have positive ending cash balances for all of our COE funds. So that's a great thumbs up for the organization. So now we're going to move into a summary of some of our key updates. We continue to have an influx of new resource codes and new increased grant awards relating a lot to our student support services and wellness work that we've been doing. You can see that there's a list up there of some of the, all of those do relate to those activities, with the exception of the last one. The last one, you may know, we experienced flooding across the street at 399. I think you all might already be aware of that with the rainstorms. And so what happens is we do receive in restricted monies from the insurance company in order to affect the repairs that are necessary from the, the damage. So that's insurance. But that list alone represents approximately $1.7 million of new money. So a lot of times, the question comes in like, well, why do your revenues go up so much? Well, sometimes we get grants. We, actually, here, we get a lot more grants than you might experience at a district and other forms of money. If there's no questions on that, we'll keep going. Okay, and I apologize, I know this is super tiny, but we've yet to figure out how to, how to make it as, as big as possible without falling off the page. But this is a high-level review at a glance showing the combined unrestricted and restricted for all of our general fund, 01 County School Service Fund. If you want to follow along in your board packet, we are going to be on page 116. The order of this information, though, will have you bouncing back and forth all over the place in your agenda, but if you want to just make a note, you, this is coming from information contained on page 116. Our first interim budget amounts are shown in that first column, so that's going to not show on your SACS reports, because your SACS reports is only going to show you what happened at adopted. And a lot can happen between adopted and first interim, and then first and second interim. So that's partially why we like to show you that first interim column. Your second interim column does tie out to your SACS report. That's going to be in column D, and then the difference out there in column E. So as you can see, when you look down to the total, sorry, adopted budget projected, okay. Our adopted budget, when you're looking at your SACS report, showed that we had estimated a $6 million deficit in deficit spending slash budgeting. But at first interim, which is now on the slide, you can see that that deficit was reduced down to about $2.6 million. And now at second interim, there's a surplus of $1.3 million, again, noting some of those changes in revenue that we experienced. And so when you look at the slide, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line down. We're going to look at that. That's our ending, projected ending fund balance. We're moving from $32,390 at first interim up to $36,391 at second interim. So that alone is a difference of about $4 million. Again, that difference is coming from a change of 3.2 total additional revenues or transfers in, coming in, plus a softening of our expenses. Our expenses went down, so that's like a plus-plus, if you will. And that gives us a net deficit surplus change of just $4 million. The components of our ending, our expected or projected, rather, ending fund balance of $36 million is almost $7 million of that lives on the restricted side of the budget. And then the remaining, remaining $29,000 will be living over on the unrestricted side of the budget, and we'll have assignments that match that dollar amount. The list of all the assignments can be found on pages 100 and 101 of your board packet on Form 1. So now we know what the total, total budget looks like. We're going to kind of zero in now on our unrestricted side. Our unrestricted side oftentimes needs to be looked at with the lens of, that's kind of more of our operating budget. That's where we pay our bills from, and some of our people, a lot of our people, our utilities, legal bills, whatever, this is kind of more of our operating budget. Our restricted budget is really focused on grants, people who are running those grants and federal money, things that are, come with specific streams attached to them. So just looking at the unrestricted side, we can see that at first interim, our total revenues were approximately $35 million, and those went up slightly, about $643,000. One of the things that really I know helped, if you go look at the detail, was we experienced better interest earnings. Can't believe I'm actually saying that, because we were not saying that very long ago. But we had a very soft interest budget, interest earnings budget, and so I know some adjustments came through in all of our funds for the amount of interest we have been receiving ahead of pace when we looked at our original budget. Our total expenses out also decreased from $36 million down to $35 million, or less expense of $1 million. So again, more money, less expense, plus-plus, that's good for us. I didn't mean to make that run, by the way. That was a mistake. I just realized it. It wasn't intentional. I need, I need to go, yeah, that can be my after-career, right? Writing poetry. Okay. So what that does for us as far as our deficit in the unrestricted side is we move from having an $877,000 deficit to a surplus of about $769,000, or an overall net change of $1.6 million. And we have assigned out the components of that ending fund balance. Some, a couple of highlights are total expenditures and transfers out for unrestricted also contains about just shy of $2 million worth of contributions that the unrestricted budget makes to the restricted budget or restricted programs. And some of those programs are our routine restricted maintenance, which we are required to contribute to. That's about $1.2 million of the total. Our new teacher project, our special education, which is our own AltEd special education, and also, that's the major part of it. I'll leave it there. Also, our Tier Two Admin Credentialing Program and our AltEd Sports League, and also CTEP for the Medical Assisting Program. We had a lower-than-expected, you might remember us talking about that, a lower-than-expected enrollment, and so we're going to be helping support that program this year. Just so the restricted budget doesn't feel left out, we thought we'd put a slide up here for them, too, because we want to treat everybody equally. If you, also, this is in your board packet, page 108. So you can see that our adopted budget on your SACS report projected approximately $1.6 million in deficit spending. On our slide, you can see that at first interim, our deficit was predicted to be about $1.7, and now at second interim, it's $561,000. So again, we are seeing increased revenue back up to that first line on the slide up there of about $2.6 million. And we've kind of already talked about what most of those are earlier on in this presentation. And we also have an increase, a slight increase in our expenses out of $276,000. So our projected ending fund balance is moving up to approximately, just shy of $7 million, or 2.3 more than our ending fund balance. So here, we know also, we have multi-year funded grant expenditures that happen. So, you know, it could be dollar in and planned expenses for the current year, but if that money that's coming in stretches over a three-year period, you will have your money coming in, but then you'll have expense, expense, expense. As a result, your balance will go down as you continue to spend out the residual and remaining dollars of that particular grant. So that's a very normal pattern to see when you're looking at your restricted budget. Right. So assumptions, we're going to move into the multi-year projection now, and assumptions for the multi-year projection. Now, you might recall that some of this information may look super familiar to you, and it's because at our first interim, we budgeted very conservatively in recognition of the fiscal storm that was brewing out at the state level. So your assumptions could be found on page 210 of the board packet. I would probably make a note of that page, because just kind of at a glance, that lets you know like what we're thinking, what we're thinking things might go with the budget, and that's the reason why we choose to present our budget in the way that we do. As a reminder, we've already settled for negotiations for the 2324 fiscal year, the year we're currently in. And so tonight, what was sunshine was for the next fiscal, fiscal year that starts And so tonight, what was sunshine was for the next fiscal, fiscal year that starts on July 1. So all of those costs had already been included in our budget prior to this presentation this evening. Our step and column movement for certificated and classified has been included at 1.3 and 1.2%. Our STIRS rate, which is the teachers' retirement system, is in at 19.1% for current and two subsequent years. On our next item, this is where we had a slight change, PERS, which is the retirement system for our classified employees. Those rates are now at 26.68, 27.80. At first interim, that was, that number was 27.7, so it has a tendency to like try to sneak up on you. And 28.5% at first interim, that was 28.3%. So looking ahead to the next, the following out years, PERS is projected to be 28.9% for '26, '27, which we don't forecast at this time, but in '27, '28, it's projected to move up to 30.3%. So that's a pretty big significant change for sure. Our health and welfare estimate originally at first interim was at 7%, but now based on information, new information we've received, we've moved that number up to 8.5%. And then we've also adjusted, as I mentioned earlier, for our grants that may span over multiple years. And because of the fiscal storm that's out there and we've all read the headlines about our current state budget and revenue situation, we continued to use COLA amounts of zero for both the '24, '25 and '25, '26 fiscal years in order to be conservative. Right now, you know, the COLA for next year said it was going to be 0.76. And so we kind of had a conversation about that and said, let's just go with zeros because things are not looking really good and I'm hoping zero it is and not something south of zero like we had a few years back. So speaking of the COLA, I kind of, this is a new slide. I've never kind of put COLA together before in this fashion to share with boards in my past, but I, I kind of like it because I'm a numbers nerd. I'm in the right job, that's for sure. And I like to see how much things can change and how quickly they can change. For example, the year that we're in right now, '23, '24, 8.22% COLA. You know, some of our members on this board, they've been around, you know that that was just an anomaly, that was like, you know, way out of the norm of what we're used to seeing when it comes to cost of living increases. So at the enacted budget for the '24, '25 fiscal year, the estimate was 3.94 for the COLA. And then our first interim estimate lowered it down to 1.27. And these are the numbers coming out of like the LAO and other resources. And now the current estimate is 0.76. For next year, it was going to be, sorry, I just did it. I just broke the golden rule. I said next year. I told you it was going to be me. Darn, it's like having a swear jar. I'm going to have to go put 25 cents in the jar now. Sorry, guys. For the '25, '26 year, original estimate was 3.29, now it's 2.73. And for the '26, '27 year, it was 3.19 and now it's going to be 3.11. So I'm looking, you know, at that bottom, bottom rung at the bottom. So it just helps, I like this slide because it does help show the volatility and unpredictability of COLA, which is oftentimes, you know, my mentors always told me when I was growing up in school business, like when you're thinking about increases or raises, never bank on next year's COLA to pay for what you're offering today. And this is a really great slide that kind of helps demonstrate how, how much things can swing. Our funded ADA assumptions on the next slide. Following along, our ADA information is also on page 185 of your board packet. What you see on your slide here is five years, the two prior, the current and two subsequent years. Districts throughout the state are, as we know, experiencing declining enrollment, which also translates into declining ADA. So our Alt Ed programs are actually starting to show some ADA recovery post-COVID, which was great. And I don't know if you recall, but a couple of years ago, we were saying how all around the state, there were huge declines in the Alt Ed and we didn't decline nearly as much. So that really speaks a lot to our Alt Ed programs. So we are, are showing a change. We, at second interim, we're at 979.97. It's that third column over on the top line in our estimates for ADA, which is, which is nice. But we do still continue to estimate a decrease in the out years. And that's around a 1% decline. And the reason for that is overall, we do see enrollment dropping dramatically in our county. And that's going to be evidence when you look at the very last line of that chart about our countywide enrollment and how it's declined. '21 and '21, '22, the first column, countywide, we had 34,717 ADA. And the next year, it dropped to 33,287. And so this year so far, we're thinking we're going to be around 33,205, which is a little bit softer. And then continuing on, 32,008 and 32,005. Again, kind of matching with the overall decline is that we are seeing in our county. So, excuse me. Once the end years, we are funded annual on our, on our attendance, then we will have the final numbers reflected in our estimated actuals. This year too, we were fortunate enough that the legislature allowed us to take advantage of ADA relief that all of our districts have had already available to them. And that was by providing us with the option of using the greater of current, prior or three prior years average to calculate out our LCFF. So right now, the three prior year average ADA does result in a higher amount than using prior or current formulas. So we know that right now we're being funded on a higher number in some instances than what we are actually experiencing. For example, our court ADA is around 30 in the current year, but because we're able to take advantage of that three-year prior average, we're actually being funded on 66. So that's great now, but the big thing we really need to keep in mind is that there will be kind of a cliff coming when those, you know, protected years, as far as ADA was concerned, start to roll out of that calculation. But for now, that's, that's good for us. We will take it. So now that we've talked about our assumptions, we're going to look at our three-year unrestricted multi-year projections. And this also is in your packet on pages 199 to 200. So let's see here. So our beginning balance, which is noted on the forms in your SACS packet, was at $28 million. And our total revenues and transfers in now for, for our second interim for the current '23, '24 year are approximately 35,800. Our total expenses out are 35,000. That gives us back to that $769,000 number we were talking about earlier on the detail slides with a projected ending fund balance of approximately $29 million. So moving over into column E, I'm going to have you look at that third column over. I'm sorry, the second column over. That's what we're projecting for the '24, '25 fiscal year. Again, rolling our $29,000 beginning balance up to the beginning of '24, '25, that line one up there. And our total revenues coming in will be about 33,500. Our total expenses will be around the same, about $35,000. And we are predicting a deficit therefore of approximately $1.5 million. Again, most of that softening is because of our revenues and transfers in. Again, ADA is rolling off. We're getting into some lower funded ADA years. That would though leave us with an ending fund balance of approximate, just, just shy of $28 million, 27.9. We roll that number over to the '25, '26 year. Again, our revenues and transfers in, a little bit softer as well for, at 32,606. Our expenses and transfers out are at 34.5 million. And that gives us a deficit of approximately $1.8 million and an ending fund balance of about $26 million. So again, keeping in mind too, we're being super conservative with our COLA estimates. Our restricted multi-year projections, maybe those are also in your SACS packet or in your board also, pages 201 to 202, board packet. Column A is what our projected totals are for the current year. We have that beginning balance of $6.3 million. Our revenue and transfers in of 35.6, expenses out 35. There's that familiar number of $561,000 of surplus and an ending fund balance of 6.9 million. And that rolls over into our second column with an anticipation of $30 million of new revenues and 32, again, spending down some of those multi-year grants, bringing us to a planned deficit of 1.7. You know, I often say, not all deficits are bad. So this is an instance where this is not a bad thing. It means we're actually utilizing our money as we're supposed to be and paying for things that those grants were intended for. Leaving us with a $5 million ending balance, which will roll over into the '25, '26 year, $30 million of revenue in our third year out and 31.7 in expenses, another, showing another deficit and an estimating ended fund balance in restricted, $3.6 million. So using those funds again over multiple years, again, this is a super, very familiar pattern for those of you who've been on boards for a while. Not, nothing to write home about on that page. That's pretty understandable. So as in combined, I don't know if you need me to read, we'll go ahead to the next slide, which is our combined budget. Thank you. For both unrestricted and restricted. So this is just the math of, you know, unrestricted plus restricted. I think the news really on this page is we want to just jump down to your ending fund balance, which is about in the middle of that slide on that table. We are projecting to end this year, '23, '24 with $36 million. Our '24, '25 with $33 million and our '25, '26 with about $29.6 million, of which 6.9 million, 5.1 and 3.6 are all attributable to the restricted side of our budget across all three of those years. In addition to this, and not noted on this page, is our special reserve, which is Fund 17. For '23, '24, we have $3.2 million over there. For '24, '25, we'll have $3.4 million and '25, '26, another three and a half. So that special reserve fund is, which is where we keep the board commitment of 5% on this, on that special fund. We'll settle that up when we get into our estimated and unaudited actuals. We'll make sure that as we're closing the books and all the dust settles, that that does equal 5% or super, super, super close or maybe even a little over. Okay. So our criteria and standards review. If you don't have time to read anything, this is the thing you really want to look at because that gives you a quick glance at the overall health of our organization and if any of the transactions that you are contained in our documents are, you know, troubling or problematic. So our first, and this is also, a lot of these criteria and standards, I don't know if I've actually said this much, but it's, a lot of it's based on like a variance that's already figured out for you. So if you operate below or above what that average variance is, then you get tagged of like, well, this isn't normal, what's going on here? So we did have a finding for item 4A and it said that our projected operating revenues for the current and two subsequent fiscal years have not changed by more than a 5% since first interim. And, and so we flunked that one, but it was a good flunk because it was because we were above 5%, not below. And the reason we were above 5% was because we had our updated allocations that came with additional revenue for Title I and special education funding for Alt Ed and also SR2 and 3. So significant reductions in subsequent years is a result of our multi-year one-time funding being exhausted, which I've kind of walked you through already, but it does tag it as like, hey, something changed by more than your normal 5%. It's okay. Item 4B, projected operating expenditures, book supplies, services, et cetera, for the current and two subsequent fiscal years have not changed by more than 5% from, from first interim. And that's in a direct correlation to the first item. When you get restricted dollars in, you, you also then budget for the restricted expenditures that go along with those revenues. Our next criteria is criteria six, unrestricted deficit spending has not exceeded the standard in any of the current or two subsequent fiscal years. And deficit spending in the two out years, subsequent fiscal years, is a result of planned expenditures for increases in CalPERS. Those are pretty large increases. And also our health and welfare coverage in conjunction with that 0% COLA on revenue. Our temporary inter-fund borrowing, yes, we anticipate the need to have temporary borrowing for short-term cash flow needs. So the County School Service Fund, Fund 1, will be sending potential saving, or sorry, loans, if you will, over to the charter school, I'm sorry, our charter fund, child development and cafeteria funds. This is always due to the timing of state revenues and they always pay us back. So it's just a temporary loan that you'll see going out. Also have criteria S5 on our next slide, have contributions from unrestricted to restricted resources or transfers to or from the County School Service Fund changed since first interim by more than $20,000 or 5%? And the answer to that is also yes. We had, showed an increase of transfer to our County School Facilities Fund because we do have some projects coming up. We're hopeful that we're going to have some projects coming up in the near future, some modernization projects that we're also planning to apply for state funds for. We've talked about this also in the past. And so we kind of did our best guess of about a $500,000 that we may need to front initially to get those facilities projects going, but then we will at some point in time be refunded for those dollars from the state school facilities program. All right. Do we have long-term multi-year commitments? Yes, we're still paying down our COP using RDA funds to pay off that COP. And the COP now has moved into our debt service fund, Fund 56. I'm really pleased to report that the strategy of moving our debt payment to the debt service fund is starting to work out really well. By moving the source revenue, RDA, to the debt service fund, we are now also building that fund through interest earnings. So we're not only keeping, if the RDA comes in high, we're, we're paying our payment and we're keeping the residual out in that fund to help us pay things down quicker. And now we're actually being able to claim our interest earnings, which in the past just sat over in the general fund. So so far this year, we've earned an additional $30,000. I'm so excited about that. And that's through February. I love it when a plan comes through, which will help us in making our future payments along with the residual RDA money. So in previous years, everything just kind of hung out in the general fund and we made that payment and then the residual money just kind of built up. So this strategy is going to be really great for us to achieve our goal of paying that debt down sooner. And I know that that's important for our trustee Sanchez. That's one of his favorite topics too. So it's, the, the plan is working and we're really excited about, I'm really excited about it. Okay. So what's next? Our self-insurance fund, sorry, the workers comp has had no changes. So on our next slide, it's like, here we go. Thank you. What's next? So the May revise is going to be released on May 14. We will be attending our school services workshop on May 21 in Sacramento. We're hearing, and probably you are too, that there's a high probability that the May revise is going to be kind of different from the January proposal that came out. So the state's revenue continues to come in well below the January estimates. The LEO projects another $24 billion below the three-year budget period. And then as far as actual receipts are concerned, as of February, revenue collections are approximately $6 billion below what was expected in January. So the governor recognized a $58 billion deficit in January and the LAO projects that it's going to swell to a $73 billion problem that's going to need solving. And so economists, if you like to follow them, are predicting that in the fourth quarter of this of this year, we're going to reach the trough, as they refer to it, the low, the low point. And that we will then rebound with slow growth to our economy after that. So this signals a no recession, or as I like to say, a lower probability forecast as far as recession is concerned. I think that's really interesting, and it's an interesting job because you're never really wrong. It's kind of being a weatherman, right? Bloomberg, a couple of months ago, was predicting a recession at 65% probability. And now, and I just checked in with my colleague down at the county treasurer's office, he was saying, yeah, let me run, throw you the Bloomberg report. Now they've reduced it down to approximately a 40% chance. So we may be looking at not quite dipping our toes into that recession pool, but maybe some slow growth afterwards. So that's, that's probably not bad news when you consider all the other signals, especially when we have an inverted yield curve and all these other things that kind of point to a recession. They're still saying they think we're going to be okay. So it's, it's interesting. So also what's next is the proposed budget was released in January. So our staff uses this proposal to formulate their initial assumptions for the preparation of our 24, 25 budgets. And then we refine those once the May revise is released. And as always, because we are going into year end, we continue to monitor our revenues and expenditures and begin our estimated actual projections alongside and in tandem with that 24, 25 budget development. Pregnant pause, next slide. That's okay. On that happy note, see, I was waiting for the right time to say it. This concludes my presentation.
There was a little art in there with the poetry and.
Yeah.
Happy note musically.
Musically, happy note.
Anyway, are there any questions? I don't want to miss you.
I don't know if you caught that I said, no questions. Thank you.
Yes, able.
So I have two comments and about, let's say, five questions. So two comments. First, I want to talk about the criteria and the standards review, that list that we typically go through and the met and the not met. And I just want to say that this, I feel like the state wants us to be boring, right? Because if we met everything, it means consistency. It means there wasn't very much change, you know, from one year to the other. So if you want to be rebellious and have more revenue than last year, more than 5%, then I say, let's go for it, all right? So it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just a change, you know, that might freak some people out, but that's, that's how we roll. And then the second one is I wanted to also share my appreciation, you know, just for the entire team. I think we are incredibly fortunate in the position that we are in. And I don't think other districts, other COEs are as fortunate. And I know a lot of work goes into running those numbers, make sure that they're accurate, make sure that they're reported accurately. And when they are, it makes our, makes my work a lot easier, you know, makes our work a lot easier when we have that support, that staff that we can confide in. So I personally want to appreciate, you know, and say thanks to you and your team. Because again, it just, it allows us to sleep at night. So I have a couple of questions, again, clarifying questions. The first one was, we looked at attendance, ADA, alternative education. Alternative education, that includes core and community schools, right? That, that's what we call core and community schools.
Kind of all enveloped, enveloped. I don't know if you want to go back, sorry, to that slide? But it's all kind of, it's kind of in the middle of the, sorry.
Yes. Got to get rid of those slide transitions. There you go.
I think this is it.
So the, the first row that I'm looking, alternative education, core and community schools, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then charter is the third one, special education, separate one. Okay.
So our formula is a little bit different than like school districts because we're funded on one rate for the countywide number and then ADA for the other numbers.
Okay.
One down.
One down, okay. State mandated reserves. Do we have a specific line item for that? Or is it included there in the?
Are you talking about our reserve for economic uncertainties?
Correct.
Yeah, that's definitely, I don't know that we call it out on any of the slides, but that's absolutely included in your, in your packet.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
No, it's fine.
Okay. It is, when you look at the second page of each of the funds, so if the first page is summary level, I know you're really familiar with the documents, it's revenue expenditures, and then it goes to the second page, and then you've got your ending fund balance. After the section that talks about your ending fund balance, that's where you're going to see our designated for economic uncertainties reserves.
Okay, perfect.
Plus Fund 17.
Okay. And then I have, I have a lot of comments, but I want to focus, I want, I'm going to save them for later because I don't think it's relevant to this presentation. But I do want to ask a question that will help me understand a little bit better. But certification, the positive, negative, qualified, that's done first interim and second interim, correct?
Yes.
Okay, for the county office of education, for us.
It's for any LEA.
And that was going to be my follow-up question.
And the definition of what constitutes those classifications is defined by the CDE. So if you were, go to the California Department of Education and just type in interim certifications, it's going to pop up with all those definitions. So in my slide, as brilliant as I am, I actually quoted directly off the CDE website to make sure there was no confusion because there's some language in there that's a little, I would say, I'll say permissive, and sometimes people interchange words and it's not quite the same meaning. That's why some of the language, I don't know if Ferris can find that slide or not, it's way up in the beginning, says "may". And also, you may have heard when I was speaking, I also emphasized the word "or".
Okay, yeah.
And so those are, those definitions come straight from the CDE website.
Okay, yeah.
And so districts are subject to this criteria classification. We are as well.
Okay, yeah. Just want to clarify that the COE and the districts are the same.
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other comments?
Put your mic on.
I have a comment. I, it always occurs to me that I could get on top of understanding the budget if things were patterned the same month after month. But I don't know whether it's always the same, but today you taught me a lot of things about the budget, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. That's a compliment. I appreciate that.
Yeah. I was, I was looking for someone in the business offices in my previous job as a PVUSD trustee, and I was trying to get someone in the business office to help me understand what the heck was going on with these huge budgets. I just, and, and she said, I don't have, I don't have time to explain that to you.
Sorry.
So that was, you know, kind of a turnoff. And I remember who it was too. But she's not sitting here today. You really, really did a good job.
Thank you.
Explaining the budget.
Well, you know, at Sandra School Finance is not for sissies.
Oh, it's not for sissies.
No, it's very complicated. It's hard to understand. We don't operate like a normal business, and that drives a lot of people crazy. We don't sell widgets, we educate children. So I appreciate that.
Any other?
It wasn't complicated, we wouldn't be paying attention. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Okay.
I would like to add just a few comments and thanks to, to Leanne and our amazing business services team. We've been especially challenged in our support for school districts and especially Live Oak School District has really taken, you know, has really impacted our workload. And our team continues to do outstanding work and to deliver excellence every day. And they are, you know, in many ways, the backbone of everything that we do, fueling the, the, the resources that are needed to, for us to serve students and families. So always grateful. And also appreciate the clarity and with which this information is presented. I think we pride ourselves, thanks to Leanne's skills and abilities, in that we really want to make this information, you know, that you can make informed decisions when you're making, when you are approving this, this budget, and that you have access to as much clarity and information as, as, as you need. And so if there's any, if, as you know, if you ever have any additional questions, Leanne and our team are ready to sit down with you, spend as much time as is needed to help you provide more clarity.
I've never seen you stumped, ever, over the years that I've known you, which is a very good thing.
I'm just going to tag on to this wonderful praise that we're, I mean, we're all saying to the business team, to you, you know, thank you for everything. Like, you know, for me specifically, as a new trustee, you've made it so, you know, easy to comprehend when, you know, the forms are at a font size of three and hundreds of pages of them to, to look at. And you don't, you know, one, one, you're saying, oh, one, 120, page 120, and then you're jumping over to like page 200. And you're really trying to make it easy for us to understand. And it really, it is so helpful. I took so many notes, but already, I've already learned so much that I'm, I'm taking down notes that I, I already know now. So thank you for taking, you know.
Well, you know where my office is. You can always come visit and we can go through stuff together.
Get some snacks, right?
You will can have some snacks too.
Again, thank you. Good backbone. Now we'll move into new business and action items. 8.1, approval, these are resolutions, approval of resolution, item 24-08, recognizing April as bilingual, multilingual advocacy month.
Could I say something about this?
Absolutely, please.
Okay. Because I can't believe that 42% of Santa Cruz County students in the age groups from, from TK through 12th grade are multilingual learners. It's, it's, it's just amazing. But there's a big heaping handful in there of, of students that come to this, come to school without knowing English. And so they, they immediately build a base of multilingual learners. And, and I've always thought that if the kids that are, that don't speak English, haven't been exposed to it in, in early childhood, and, and so everybody wants them to learn English and be a multilerner, multilingual learner. So I just, I think it's, I'm really proud of what the, what the local schools are doing to provide multilingual skills. And my two grandchildren speak Spanish and English now. And, and my, and my granddaughter plays Put the Child on the Swing instead of Hangman with Me in English and Spanish. And, and she, she wrote out the blocks for a really long word, and I said, there's no, there's no word that that's, that is that long. And she said, it is a word, in Espanol. And then she go, finally, she tells me what it is. And the, and the word was supermercado. That's a lot of lines in one of those hangman drawings. I think they took the violence out of that game. We don't play that anymore. We played Put the Child on the Swing. Better. Gives you a better picture. So I, I, I was first exposed to De La Vieja's multilerner program when I went to a parent event. And I heard kids who were in fifth grade and had always been in that program. Now granted, they had a mother who was bilingual and she was a bilingual teacher in the school. And, and those, and several of those kids gave, they gave, you know, oral reports in Spanish to the, to an audience of adults. And I was just so impressed that, that they could learn a second language that competently. So we all, I think we all would like to recognize the bilingual, multilingual advocacy month resolution. And I think we did this last year, and Nick and Vernice helped us get ready for these, to get these on the agenda. I thank you both for what you do as a, as good. I'm glad you're relying on what we've done before.
I could add one thing about the resolution. And so the term multilingual learner is, is kind of a newer term. You know, we started with a deficiency model, calling students limited English, and, and then we moved to English language learners and, and, and so this term, multilingual is for everybody who is, you know, developing English, their English skills, or speaking different languages, right? It's kind of an all encompassing term. And then I think it really celebrates the idea of an additive approach, that they, students bring a rich language and culture and experience to their school. In addition, we want them to be successful and have those English skills as well. And so in, in that 40% is included, the students who are still working on, on developing their proficiency in English, those who've already developed proficiency in English, and those who, when we provided the home language survey, they already showed proficiency. And so, so it's kind of this, this bigger group of students. It's, you know, again, it's also part of our role in the, here at the county office. We have a, we have a language ambassadors program, we have different ways to also celebrate people who are developing other, you know, who speak English as a first language and developing other languages as well. And so this idea of celebrating multilingualism is about celebrating diversity, it's about celebrating the richness that we bring that makes us unique and also, you know, coming together as a community.
And Sandra shared with me the certificate of, would you tell this story?
Okay, I guess we did tell a lot of stories. Some of them were too true. This here is, is one that was true. When I retired from the Board of Education and PVUSD, I thought about the things that I had accomplished as a trustee and pushed through. And, and one of the things was that they got the filing, the certificate of bilingualism as an add-on to their diploma. And, and it was legal, it's legal to do this, to, as long as you, as long as you have tests to measure how, how well they, how well they performed in, in two different languages and in reading, writing, listening, and, and speaking. So, yeah, that cut me off, didn't it? I forget what I was talking about. Oh, about the, I did get to see on people's diplomas what it looked like. And what, what I think, if you're showing a job, an employer, your skills, here is your diploma, and here is the proof that you can be a bilingual worker. And bilingual workers are in some, in many, many, many jobs crucial. So I like that we're doing this again this year, and I don't have any more comments. And I just thank you for your help in preparing these. So is it time for a motion?
Unless there's the other.
Oh, yeah. Anybody here can make a comment, of course. Who wants to make a comment?
I'll comment. Yeah, I want to second a lot of what has already been said, that, you know, being multilingual, bilingual is a positive, you know, especially in our, you know, globalized world, you know, it, it opens up, you know, a person's horizons, job opportunities, like was mentioned. And I, I mean, I am monolingual, I don't know Spanish, but my, that's because, you know, my great-grandparents, you know, it was their first language. and they were bullied in school for it. And I think that really goes to show the importance of, you know, embracing multilingualism in schools, you know? And that's why it wasn't passed down through the generations, because it was something that you could only speak at home and that you couldn't, um, you know, bring to school and that they were punished, you know, at school for it. Uh, and I mean, I also wanna recognize that that happened with, you know, you know, native boarding schools as well to, you know, um, you know, assimilate, um, you know, indigenous, native cultures, you know, in a kind of a, you know, cultural genocide on, on, you know, eliminating native languages that, uh, communities, communities are still trying to, um, you know, uh, come back from. So this, you know, it is incredibly important. And I really love also the multilingual, you know, transition as well, you know, and that, uh, you know, it is incredibly important to recognize that and to encourage multilingualism and that it is absolutely a positive. And so I'm, I'm grateful that we're at this place, you know, in schools and society.
If I could, um, just, uh, there is a, a, that it says April 2023 in the middle of if. So whoever makes the motion, if they could change that to April 2024?
Oh, yes. I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. And with that change that Ferris suggested, thank you.
I'll second it. Um, one thing no one's mentioned today that to me is really important about multilingual approaches is that there's a lot of research that seems credible to me that sort of pedagogically, if you speak more than one language, you have a better grasp of the world, you learn more. There's a lot of benefits that show up in that in terms of someone's own development. And, um, being multilingual seems to be a very key piece of what all the different ingredients in someone's life might be for that kind of, um, advancement and learning and success. So, um, again, just to add to the, why it's a positive, why it isn't just overcoming the negative of somebody who can't speak English, you know, as you described in the history.
Okay.
And I seconded the motion.
Good, good.
Okay, as, as this is a roll call vote, uh, thank you, Ferris. Oscar?
Yes. Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen?
Aye.
President Roth?
Yes.
Resolution passes. And then just to excite you all for next month, we will have our new multilingual coordinator, Barbara, presenting.
Our next resolution, um, is 24 dash 09 in recognition of Environmental Awareness Week, uh, April 19th through the 23rd.
When I think about the number of problems there are in the world and where I'd like to spend some, some of more, more of my energy is, um, the, the environmental awareness. Uh, and ever since, ever since global warming has been on the table, you know, I shudder to think, uh, how, excuse me, how, how, um, it's, uh, well, it's a big, it's a big project to get a hold of. And I know that Bruce has had a lot of experience with this. And you, you worked with students in, in, uh, environmental awareness. Uh, that, that's good that you did that. Are you still doing that with the, with the students? Or is it a different group because they've moved on, they've graduated and moved on?
No, I'm, but I, I do.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, educating the, the youth about, uh, environmental, uh, causes and, uh, to seek, and to seek to provide learning opportunities and avenues for student engagement in environmental concerns. Students learn how important our environment is to our future. Nothing more to add.
Any other comments before we move to a motion?
I'll move it. Option of resolution 24 dash 09, recognition of Environmental Awareness Week, April 19th to 23rd, 2024.
I'll second.
And I'd like to add that this morning I read that the cherry trees in Washington DC, I think a hundred of them are going to be removed, including stumpy, uh, which I guess has been a big thing, uh, for a few weeks because of, uh, the rising water levels in Washington, uh, which I did not know. And I'm thinking, well, good place for this to be happening in full view of our. I know our, our youth are really taking this to heart and going forward. And it's us adults who need to catch up. Anyway, so we do have a motion in a second. Vernice, would you?
Yes. Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Sorry. Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? President Roth?
Yes.
Resolution passes. And then also just preface before Superintendent Sabah does his report, the YEA Student Summit is April 22nd.
We have one more resolution maybe.
Uh, the next resolution is in recognition, uh, 24 dash 10, uh, recognition of National Child Abuse Prevention.
Okay. It horrifies me that each year, millions of reports of child abuse are reported to Child Protective Services in the United States. I used to be in a job where, where that was one of the most important parts of our job, was to report, uh, children who, who had suspected problems with not being protected. But, uh, I, this was one of my first jobs and it was my best job at the time. I was a social worker in the, they called it, the welfare department. And a lot of things have changed about welfare. But Child Protective Services lives on and has not been changed. They have specialists in that, uh, that field of, of what to do to protect them and, and legal experts. And, um, it's one of the most important jobs of social services to, to protect children. I, I think that's the most important part of the resolution. I'll leave that there.
If I could just add, uh, I recently had an opportunity to, uh, join Stephanie Barron, uh, from Positive Discipline on a podcast about, about, uh, uh, kind of bringing attention to, uh, to child abuse prevention in our community. And it is absolutely, as, as trustee Nichols mentioned, something that is heartbreaking and one that we can't close our eyes to, one that we need to confront. I think making, uh, standing up for this resolution and, uh, really letting it be known that, that, uh, that abuse is occurring and it can be prevented and that we need to do everything we can to keep our children safe is, is, is so important. And so thank you for, for considering this resolution.
And Art, we, as board members now required to take some form of training?
And child abuse, I, I think it's ethics training that you're.
And it, that's not included in it. It's just ethics. I don't know. I'm getting, I have to do it up at U C.
I believe you are all required to do the KENON trainings, um, which we do have mandated reporter training.
Is that a new requirement?
I think so.
I think it's been in existence for a long time.
That, yeah, I believe that's a yearly training requirement that all COE-related personnel, including all volunteers, have to complete every year.
Uh, yeah, I thought that, that requirement was in place before, but we can check. We'll check.
The ethics training is the new requirement.
Ethics training is, and we'll, we'll be talking about that in a few moments.
I also just wanted to add, um, that in addition, these aren't trainings you'd necessarily have to take, but optional. Um, through the KENON are some, um, they're difficult, but they're super important trainings on how to recognize prior to abuse actually occurring. It goes through what the grooming process looks like, signs to look for. The last person you think would be involved in that sometimes is, is the popular person at school. So if, you know, there's a lot of really great trainings out there available for staff, for school staff, especially people who are, you know, on the frontline with kids. Um, then our insurance company also does sponsor April's Child Abuse Month. Business department always tries to wear blue on one certain day of the week in recognition of that. So I'm very pleased that you bring forward this resolution each year.
We have to do a resolution again every year in order for them not to grow stale.
Well, I'd like to move the resolution and, um, it's, it's awful and, and in a way terrifying, but the, you know, our mission is to bring kids into the positive growth and, and, uh, members of community and the nation and so on. And yet this is, this is a dark side of what is also part of our mission, which is in a sense is to the extent that we are able, which is limited, to protect the kids, not just nourish them and teach them and help them expand, but actually protect them against, um, all kinds of harm. And one of the things that, that to me is, is important in terms of the community is the awareness that, um, it's easy for parents and guardians to lose their temper or their patience or their, um, uh, willingness to accept a kid's own path and, and to over discipline. And that becomes a form of abuse that, that can be as damaging to some of the others. And I just wanna add that as part of the picture here, that it's, um, we promote education as a positive thing and a growthful thing. And, and in general, I feel our schools are not involved in education as a strict disciplinary and punishment oriented set of schools. I don't think we have that around here. And that's a really good thing in my view, because that reinforces the idea that the way to get someone to behave the way you want is to threaten them or coerce them or use violence against them. And that's gotta be something that all of society faces and it starts with how we treat kids. 24 dash 10.
I'll second.
We have a, uh, motion in a second.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? President Roth?
Yes. Motion, uh, or the resolution passes. Uh, the next is the approval of resolution 24 dash 11 in recognition of National Arab American Heritage Month.
Okay, I, I was, um, I was surprised when we got this resolution at first. And I think because our country has had bad relations with certain, uh, Arab nations, uh, that, that is what has caused people to be prejudiced against Arab Americans, because that just floors me. But I just think it's because of what's happened with militaries in our two countries. Okay, so I, I underline the history, history of Arab Americans in the US remains neglected or diminished by misconceptions, bigotry and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. I don't think there should be bigotry or anti any, uh, other, uh, group of people, especially those, uh, uh, what, uh, country they come from or what, what language they speak. And I think in this case, uh, that, that the misconceptions have, have drawn out of, how do we feel about these people that, that we've been kind of at war with? The, the resolution doesn't get into, uh, that in particular, but I, I just wanted to add a little flavor to it. We don't have to write it in. It's good the way it is.
Any further comments?
Not for me.
Well, first of all, I, I was a little curious about the for over a century phrase. It seems to me that there's probably been people of Arab descent in North America as long as there've been non-indigenous people coming over here, I think. So I'm not sure what the significance of that century is, but that's not that important to me. Um, I, this is an awkward thing to say, but to me, in addition to the sort of the factors or the history that Sandra mentioned, there, there's also a piece of this that is about religion. That's why I'm saying this is a hard thing to talk about in a public forum, in a democracy. But the antagonism towards the religion of Islam, which is one of the largest religions in the world. And, um, I am not religious. I, I, to me, that's, it's, it's about other people, but it's about respecting other people. And to me, there is an attitude in this country which, and I don't mean this as anti-Christian, but a lot of Christians seem to think that they're the only ones that have the franchise. And that's wrong. I'm sorry. And so to me, part of what is part of the life of so many Arab Americans is the fact that they may be Islamic and they get that additional layer of prejudice and, uh, it's a type of racism or, or some, something along those lines. So, um, uh, I just felt I needed to comment on that. I, I don't like attacking anybody on their religion. I don't want assumptions about that. But there is a piece of our American culture which is anti-Islamic and it mostly comes from people that think their own religion is the only one that's valid. And that's just anti-American in my view, put it like that.
Valuable comments, Bruce.
If I could just add, you know, being an Arab American myself and, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm grateful for the board's consideration of this resolution. You know, I, you've taken a, a, a more and more proactive role in celebrating diversity in the resolutions that you've, you've brought forth. I think this is the second time we brought the, this resolution forth here. And, uh, just appreciative of, of that we recognize again it's part of our commitment to multiculturalism and, and really recognizing that, uh, that we, we wanna uplift everybody and celebrate, uh, our uniqueness. And, and I think this, this, uh, is, is, uh, a great tribute to, to, uh, those in our community and, and in our country who are Arab Americans. So thank you.
Well, I, um, uh, looked for the definition of an Arab American and it, they represent, at least in the Googling idea, 22 different nations. It is not, they're in a certain area, but it involves two different continents, maybe even three. And, uh, so it's.
A lot of variety.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, when you pointed out that over a century, there were slaves coming from some of these countries in 1600s. So, uh, you're right. Good catch. So any further comments? Motion?
I'll, I'll move the resolution, uh, 24 dash 11 in recognition of National Arab American Heritage Month.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Vernice, would you take the roll call?
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen?
Aye.
President Roth?
Yes.
Uh, approval, uh, the, we have approved of resolution 24 dash 11. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to give you a brief report. Uh, there's a lot to share and I'm going to just select a few things that I'd like to highlight and then talk about some of the many upcoming events that we have in place. Uh, we're really excited about a, a new opportunity that is being made available to teachers across the county. And this is a, uh, this is a training, a, a professional development opportunity for teachers. And this is a, this is a training, a, a professional development opportunity for teachers to explore approaches, to be, to really develop our, our classrooms as being anti-bias, anti-racism. And specifically, some of the things that our teachers have asked us for is how to create environments that really support, where students feel safe and can bring their, their selves to school. And also how to address it when students in the classroom make choices to use words that are, that are hurtful and, and denigrate. And this training was, is being provided by, by Marvel and Qudos and Melissa Roberts from our Ed Services team and New Teacher Project. And it's not, they don't have a magic wand, as they explained in the, in the training. I got to participate in their training. It's really about teachers talking about how to handle different situations and really adding to their, to their list, their, kind of their tool, tool belt of, 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 you know, ways to respond appropriately. And the presentation was powerful and, and the teachers, we had over eighty teachers at the tech center the day that I was there, and they want more. And this is something that we feel is part of an explicit approach, a deliberate approach. And I think that when we talk about addressing racism in our community, the, kind of the, the colorblind, the passive approach of just, everybody's gonna, we, we just need to get along, it doesn't work. It's not effective. We have to be thoughtful, we have to be deliberate, we have to be humble, and, and we have to build empathy for, for our students. They have to recognize the, the impact of their words. They have to recognize that, you know, that many of the things that they've learned are, have the history of what, of the words that they're using and, and the implications of what they're, what they're kind of the, the, creating a culture of hate versus creating a culture of respect and, and acceptance. And so the focus is on, you know, comes with a focus on racial injustice specifically, but it also adds components related to other kinds of bias and discrimination, such as anti-LGBTQ and, and other kinds of, of, of kind of concerning hateful rhetoric that could exist. I don't know, Angela, if you want to add anything to it, it's, it's in terms of this training?
No, I think you've captured both, and this is being responsive, but also it is a movement towards being proactive. Often we find ourselves in situations where reacting and reacting poorly, and so this is really coming together as a community to do what's right for all of our students.
And you reminded me that part of the training is also the, talking about the brain science of how we respond to certain difficult situations, such as, you know, wanting to, to, you know, run, we freeze, or we, you know, that those, those, or over, or react in a, in a way that's too aggressive, right? And so by anticipating the kinds of trauma that these, this, these kinds of words and actions can have on us, we're helping teachers to be able to respond in a way that, that there would be, is going to be more conducive to, to moving towards that, that, that respectful environment that we want. Another exciting opportunity that we have facilitated across the county is a comprehensive school threat assessment training. Threat assessment protocol is used when a, a student makes a threat of violence against the school, which is different than a, a non-student or an adult or something like that. And so when that occurs, there is a, in the year two thousand, and maybe there was an earlier version, but in the year two thousand, the, the Secret Service started developing a protocol that has been getting updated and to how to, how to properly evaluate the seriousness of a threat and, and to, to know how to respond appropriately to that threat. This is not about zero tolerance, this is not about, you know, overreacting. It's, it's really about being very thoughtful about the, about, and, and using a, a research-based methodology with a team to evaluate threats that, that occur. We have trained over a hundred people were trained in the first batch, and I believe we're going to be training another eighty or so folks in, across the county. These are all the safety folks that are, or, or staff personnel at the school sites that are involved in school safety. And so we're also creating teams that are in smaller school districts. They know now that they can reach out to us so that we can join and be a part of their team, because you have to react quickly and you need, you can't be by yourself when you're doing this kind of evaluation. You also have to work with law enforcement. And so we've made this training available to our school districts free of charge. And, and it has a, it is grounded. If you see the, the circles on the left side there, mental health and wellness, threat detection and prevention, and safety management and preparedness. The idea is that it's, it's a very proactive approach and has, has been seen to, to significantly reduce the likelihood both of disciplinary action for students, but also the likelihood of, of students and adults getting hurt on school campuses. It's a lengthy program. It's a six-hour online training plus a four-hour in-person training, so it's ten hours of training. I got to participate in it and our, our safety team here is participating in it. And administrators, teachers and other, other people from all over the county are doing it, and we're very excited to, to continue to make that available. One more piece I wanted to share with you is that we're looking to redesign the strategic plan. And so if you recall, we worked on this five years ago, was brought to you for your, your thoughts, and we're going to be coming back to you at our next board meeting to ask for your opinion. If you recall that graphic on the right side there, the outside shows the different roles you play, like convening people in the dark blue, supporting and oversight of districts on the right side there, on the bottom, our programs and services for students and families, our priorities in the middle, safety, engagement and social emotional wellness, also academic achievement and, and college and career readiness and sustainable systems, and then our values at the heart. And so we're going to be bringing this back to you, for you to give us input. We'll have just a, a, a brief conversation about if you have thoughts. We'll also, going through a process, surveying our staff as well as working with our managers to make recommendations. One of the things that's come out of the conversations already is that we want to see belonging somewhere in this, because that seems like so much of our work is about creating spaces of belonging at work, belonging in our school sites, of, when, when we're interacting with parents, that we are creating those spaces where people feel like they belong. And so I think that that's the kind of thing we want to add to it. It could also, you know, if, if you and others want to look at a, a more, a bigger redesign, we could also look at that as well. But we're all, we're going to be working again with Nicole Young, and we'll be, we'll be sharing some additional information to gather your input at the, at our next board meeting. I wanted to share with you just a little bit about our support and oversight for Live Oak School District. It's been in the news, you've probably been hearing lots of information, and there's unfortunately some information that, some incorrect information that has, that, you know, is out there in the community. We get lots of emails and calls. There's been newspaper articles written about, and so I, I wanted to give you a brief overview of where we are right now and, and also how to, how to handle any questions or, or, you know, that may come your way about this. And, and so AB twelve hundred is, is, is the law that really governs how school districts are, how they submit and get their, their, their budgets reviewed. But it also requires the county superintendent to review and approve the school district budgets and to ensure fiscal responsibility and compliance with state guidelines and financial stability. So part of that process is that, just like we reviewed today, our second interim report, and you, you, your role was to review that, the districts submit first interim reports, get that approved, and then they send it to the county office of education for review. And, and the, the basic premise, you saw those different checks that, that existed that, that, that Leanne discussed. Well, one of those is if you have enough reserves, right? And the districts have to maintain a minimum of three percent reserves in the next year and the year after that, right? So three years of, of, of reserves. And when, when Live Oak School District provided their, their budget to us, their first interim, they didn't say they were positive, as we did today with our second interim. They said they were qualified, meaning that two years out, they were, and there's a variety, there's other tests that are part of the process, and we look at a variety of factors. But, but one, one aspect was that they saw that they didn't have enough funds two years out where their three percent reserved, reserves. When we looked at the report, we found that they didn't in fact have enough, they didn't have three percent for the next school. And that their finance, their cash balance, their cash on hand was very low. And there was other factors that we looked at, that we reached out to FICMAT, we contacted the, the district to get some clarity, and based on the information and based on the requirements of the law, we determined that they in fact were negative status. And so we, we call it flipping a district, which is when you, you change the, their, their designation, their status from some, from one thing, which they said they were qualified, to negative. There's only six districts in the state that are, have a, had a, a negative designation on their first interim this year. And so they were one of the six in the, in the state. A series of things, the law requires us to follow a series of things. And FICMAT, which is the, oh, great. So I don't always remember my acronyms, but I have great support staff that do. And so they're, they're a state authorized, state agency basically, that is, provides a lot of great support, and they have some, some, legally mandated responsibilities when a district is in a negative status. And so they're going to be actually coming down, they'll be here next week, I believe. And, and so we work with them very closely, because this is what they do. They specialize in coming in and helping and providing guidance and helping districts get back on track. One of the requirements that we provided, that we asked of the district is that they put together a fiscal stabilization plan and that they begin the process of, in, in that fiscal stabilization plan, to reduce their, their deficit spending in a way to get to a point where they would meet the required reserves for their, for the district. And they also would, were, just like we did, get a second interim report approved that included those changes that they had to do, those reductions that they had to make. So at the last board meeting, they, the Live Oak School District Board approved their second interim report, and now, so now it's coming to our team to review. And we will, they, they, I believe they, they set their status as positive as a result? Yes. And so we're now reviewing it to determine if we agree with that, with their determination. They had, had approved their fiscal stabilization plan on March sixth prior to that. And so they've, they've been following the timeline. And so now it's up to us to look at their second interim report and continue the process. We don't get involved in how that, you know, the, which positions they needed to cut or what changes. We make recommendations and things like, we recommend you freeze all your spending for the rest of the year and other kinds of recommendations, but we don't get involved in, in how they put together their fiscal stabilization plan. That's the responsibility of the board. Another thing that we were asked in, in certain cases was to investigate the superintendent or follow up on certain complaints. We were very clear that that is not the responsibility of, of the, of the county superintendent, that's the responsibility of the board. That is, that falls directly under their responsibility. And, and so, for the, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, the Live Oak School Board, thank you. So we have been working closely with, with their teams. As, as you've heard, there's been a lot of instability that has occurred as a result of this process, a lot of changes in staffing. And we're doing everything that we can from supporting them with their, with their, their board meetings, in fact, providing equipment and staffing to make sure that their board meetings are compliant with the Brown Act and are as transparent as possible, to working very closely with, with the business services teams and, and helping to support them as, as they are, are working through this process. We're going to, of course, continue to provide support. We want to help the, the district get back into fiscal, fiscal stabilization as well as be able to move forward with recovering the staff, the staffing positions that, that need, that are going to need to be, that are going to, are going to need to be hired, and really move forward with healing, right? Helping to, to have that, the positive culture for the, for the district moving forward. And so I did want to ask that if you do receive questions about Live Oak and, and if you could direct them to, to our office, in many cases, we send them to, back to the district or like the school, their school board, the school district board. In other cases, if it is related to our role, we'd, we'd, we'd be happy to answer those questions. But I did want to ask you if you had any questions for me or, or Leanne. And, and Leanne and her team have been, done an outstanding job in, in, in providing the support. And we hear that at every, every board meeting. The staff have been praising the business services and the support that they've received through these very tough times. The district is, you know, it's been very tough on, on, on parents and, and students and, and very, very tough on, on staff.
I have a question. Fiscal stabilization plan, who pays for that?
Who pays for that? You mean the creation of it? It's not a, it's, it's, it's a, it's not a costly, it's basically telling us which, how much money that they need to reduce and how they're gonna get there. So they would say, so fiscal stabilization plan will say, we're going to be reducing the, we're going to do a freeze, we're, we're gonna, these are the programs we're going to make changes to, these are the positions that we're going to be reducing. And so it's something that's done internally, generally with support, and, and it's not something that, you know, has a significant cost associated with it in terms of preparing the report itself. And if you wouldn't mind, Leanne would like to add to that.
And I just want to add to that, our main focus with that is, have they identified the appropriate value? I want to just back up, but Superintendent Sabat just said, the value is really what we're focused on. Have you come up with the right number of either revenue enhancements and/or cuts to get you out of your deficit over what period of time? Again, it's one hundred percent on the district itself to select how they're going to get there. And then we're just validating, is that a valid assumption you're making, number one? Like, we don't, we will say, no, it's not going to work that you think you're going to have ninety-eight percent attendance, for example, right? So we do look at some of their assumptions, but to support what you were just saying, we're really focused on, have you identified a dollar value that's going to help you get back to being in a stable position?
So I wrote down that as the county superintendent, you have the authority of requesting a study of financial and budgetary conditions of the district. Is that the fiscal stabilization plan or is that something?
So it's, so my authority supersedes that, in that generally speaking, we can ask for that whether they're in a negative status or not. But when, when you're, when you're in negative status, a, there's a series of steps and the fiscal stabilization plan, so it's under, is under that authority, yes. It's specified in AB twelve hundred and it's, it is one of the things that is a requirement for districts to complete.
And I, I'll just end with one more comment. I just want to say that I was really upset and disappointed by comments that I heard from Jeremy Ray, specifically, from the Live Oak School District. I know that it's, it's challenging, you know, it's, it's, times are, are tough, but the COE is here to support, you know, and, and as, as far as I know, we've done, been over backwards, you know, to make sure that we can help any way that we can. Here to support, not to place blame. And, and I think it's, it's laughable that, that we would be blamed because we're not doing our due diligence or making sure that the report is accurate, when as a trustee, that's, you look at the budget, you look at the first interim, you look at the second interim. So I just want to say that, you know, again, I, I fully respect our own staff and our own office and, and feel like we're doing a, a good job. I know the times are tough and there's a lot of emotions that, that are out there, but I just want us to appreciate, you know, what it is that, that we do and, and just, I don't know, get, get the word out so that we can, so it's not the word, the, the wrong message is relayed, you know? I, I, again, I just want to appreciate the staff and this office and everything that we do. Thank you.
Just to, to clarify, so what, I mean, I've gotten really great, you know, you know, I've, have great talks with you, with the COE. So I know, but just to clarify for everyone, what were the consequences of if, you know, this budget went, went through and, you know, like, you know, kind of explaining why we did, you know, our due diligence and, and changed the certification? What were the consequences if we didn't do that or what could have happened?
State receivership. So the other thing that was of concern to us was the fact that their cash So the other thing that was of concern to us was the fact that their cash balances were extremely low and we watched them daily. And I just, like a two-minute tour of what does our review look like? We have fiscal analysts that work from FICMAT-designed checklist. So we are aligning our first level of review with what FICMAT says is best practice. So we've incorporated that into our process. After that, it goes to our executive director, Rebecca Olker. She also reviews. And after that, I also review. And then we call the CBOs at the districts if we have questions before we're done and we say, hey, this looks interesting or strange or a little bit different. Did you mean to do that? Yes, I did. What's it for? Okay, not okay. So we go through a lengthy conversation in each period. So it's not like we just get the report in and we're done in a half an hour, reread it and we're done. It's multiple days, lots of hours. And then a very detailed letter gets sent to the district, which we've also recently redesigned in a line, I get nervous, I apologize, that Dr. Sabat also has an opportunity to read and see and sign off on, that we send to the board and to the CBO as well as the superintendent. So we do go through all those steps. So if, back to your question, I just want to make sure you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into looking at these reports when they come in by our team. So again, if they were not to have made these cuts, then if to, if it were to come to fruition with the the projections that they had made, they probably would have fallen into a state of insolvency or most certainly a lack of cash, lack of going concern. Your going concern when your business is going to be able to continue to keep operating. And if you fall into that situation, then you fall into a category called lack of going concern. Because of the actions that have happened, it's an automatic trigger for FICMAT to come in and visit, as Dr. Sabat mentioned. So that's that fiscal health risk analysis. You may have heard that term. That's what they'll be conducting next week. If they did go into state receivership, then it means they lose all all control and all decision-making over the actions of their district. So most likely, a superintendent is removed. The board is, in some instances, can remain there, but a fiscal trustee or agents assigned from the state and all they care about are dollars and cents. And it's so much better to have your own board there protecting your, the programs that you want for kids and and make, being able to have control over your own decisions on, we would like this to keep this program, maybe we can change this other program in order to stay, you know, fiscally solvent. So it's not a good, not a good thing when that happens. And it was because districts went into fiscal insolvency. Richmond was the first that FICMAT was actually formed by the state of California.
If I could add, so just to clarify, and I appreciated your 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 comments, Abel, the, it would have been, it would, if we had not certified them as negative, we would not have done our due diligence. They met the, a very clear criteria for that. Mike Fine, the president of the CEO of FICMAT, agreed with us and the criteria we had used by the book, and it was very, very clear to us. And so, and I think that, you know, if, and back to your question, Edward, had we not certified them, they may not have been sufficiently aware and have a sense of of urgency to make the difficult cuts that they needed to make to be able to get to fiscal stability, which would have led to state receivership. They would have, the minute that they they would have needed a state loan would have triggered the the factors that that Leanne has has mentioned. And so we feel like this was a necessary step. We did, we did our due diligence and and we think that that as difficult as as this, we had to, this was the steps we had to take as defined by all the checklists, all the protocols and the law.
I was part of one of these at Scotts Valley. It is a very serious, sorry, emotional, too. I was on the board and this occurred. And all I know is that I appreciated, after a bit, what the COE did for us, what FICMAT did for us. And I truly started understanding more how to plan ahead for the years two and three out and that actually, being conservative, you have to be in budgeting. And that if you, you may have the money to run the programs or whatever it is you want that year, but it's going to mean the following year is going to be a bigger and more horrendous cut. And that was a very hard thing to understand at the board level is to kind of pre-cut. And because you're dealing with people, you know, your staff, your teachers, and what is it doing to your students? But.
Thank you so much for your comments and for for your support and your comments of support. Thank you. Just moving on to some more events, some exciting things that are taking place. This is really, there's so much going on and and very exciting. You know, Nick Iwara and and team are working overtime to get the word out about all these great events that are taking place and to really tell many stories that and celebrations and and opportunities for us to to grow together. There's a Her Story Celebration that we're partnering on with the MAU on March 28th. There's a youth poet laureate celebration on April 10th. There is a Think Big event on AI and ME. Oh, AI and me, so that should have been a small e. Okay, got it. I thought mechanical engineering. AI and me, all right, yes, about, so that's something that we're we're looking at, not only are we, we believe we need to embrace AI as a, as the revolution of AI, but also with caution, but also to to understand and implications and in a changing world. Also, April 24th, World Languages Showcase. I'm actually going to be sharing a poem in Arabic and English that that I've written for for my father. And and so it'd be great for you to join us for that one. Green Classroom Challenge on April 11th. And and then the Central Coast Foster Homeless Education Summit, which is a tri-county event that we we partner in, which will be April 19th. And you heard already from Verenice that the YEA summit is happening on April 22nd, which is Earth Day. And so it'd be great for for you to join us. It'd be great, especially if you're able to make it in the morning, about nine o'clock when the when the summit begins on that day. Some more information, we have ethics training that here at the COE from five to eight with CSBA. And this is to satisfy the AB 2558 requirement to participate in in ethics training. And I did, I'm going to be sending an email to you on a report that was produced by the Legislative Analyst Office. And this is about increasing transparency of county office of education spending. So the Legislative Analyst Office is recommending, and we think that this is going to, in fact, be something that will be required of the of the COEs, some additional requirements for reporting and how money is spent and in which categories and whatnot. And so I'd encourage you to take a look at that, to that report. As the COEs continue to play an increasingly more important role in supporting school districts and in the delivery of a variety of different services, including behavioral health, there's more scrutiny on 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 the COEs. And and I think that this is part of that 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 effort. And so I'll be sending you a link to that for your approval. And I believe that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm just so proud to be part of this board and the programs that you and the family, the team are bringing forward.
And you're such an important part of that, of that family. Thank you.
You guys are doing the hard work. Trustee reports. Oscar.
Yeah, I think the the speech I made at the school community celebration, I think I want to thank Ferris, Nick and Andres for allowing me to get this opportunity to do the speech and Andres for helping me prepare and Nick as well for the speech. It was, I think, I felt a sense of, like, a lot of nervousness. This is my first time ever, like, doing a speech like this in front of, in front of a big audience. And I felt those nerves, but afterwards I felt a sense of relief and accomplishment. I was, like, shaking a lot, I think, beforehand. I was like, oh, my God, and what am I gonna do? But I'm just very thankful for this opportunity. I know I saw a lot of you there. I don't know if you heard my speech, but I think I did good. I don't know.
You are outstanding. You're outstanding.
Thank you. And something that's also been piquing my interest as of late is an increase in student participation at district board meetings, especially in PVUSD. I've heard a lot of talk, especially lately from the past board meeting, about students and teachers being unhappy about ethnic studies, ethnic studies decisions that were being made. And a lot of teachers are sending students to go to these board meetings because they say, they listen more to the students than they do to the teachers. And so they've been sending students and I've actually been interested and I hope I can go to the next board meeting for the PVUSD. I know it's next week on Wednesday, so I hope I can make it to that. And I want to see and maybe talk myself about what's been going on.
Thank you. Very proud that you are on our team. Edward.
Yes, so I went to the Celebrate Our School Community event down at Sequoia. It was amazing. I loved it. You you were great, Oscar. And, I mean, the food was amazing. I gotta say that, you know, that it was, if I'm correct, it was prepared by the by students, right? The culinary, yeah. That was amazing and it was vegan and everything, you know, gluten-free, whatever, and it tasted absolutely amazing. And it was such a great event, the folklorico. I mean, it was, it was great to see. I got so many resources and I got a little bag, another COE bag, you know, a little tote bag, that I had to stuff everything into, otherwise I was going to have a packet full of stuff. So that was, that was absolutely amazing, you know, what a, you know, great show of all of the different, you know, programs that we support and, you know, what a, what a great thing to be a part of, you know, like, like Sue said. Last week, I I got trained to be a trainer for youth mental health first aid. Actually, it was paid for by the county. And so that was really amazing and it was a three-day, you know, training. And it was super informative and helpful and, you know, trying to change, you know, the stigma on mental health and also encourage training on this, just as we are trained in, you know, CPR, CPR certification, that, you know, anyone can be, you know, take a class and be CPR certified and that it can come in handy when you least expect it. And, you know, trying to challenge that, you know, with mental health as well. And it is, it was an incredible training. So now I'm, it was a train the trainer, so now I am a trainer for youth mental health first aid. So that was, that was great, provided by the county. And, yeah, I think that's mainly it. We we went over, you know, the, you know, things that are going on in Live Oak School District. And I just got to say that I, you know, while the board doesn't, you know, have any direct, you know, input into, you know, what's going on, from what I've seen, you know, the COE has done, their due diligence, and I'm really grateful that we have such a, you know, an amazing team here through such a difficult time. And I know that it's, it's really hard on on everyone right now, but thank you all and, you know, the community. I know it's, it's difficult, but we're getting through it. It was kind of a perfect storm in, from what I see, of a lot of different factors.
Thank you and congratulations on becoming a train the trainer. Not easy.
Yeah.
Sandra.
I like your report. Interesting, very interesting. Okay, mine starts out like this. It was a dark and stormy night. And Sue Roth and I had had promised to go to the COE annual event that Edward talked about. Now, I'll tell you a little bit more about that event and how I felt about going. I I felt like if Sue and I hadn't decided to go together in the same car, I think we both would have dropped out and not gone. But we we supported each other on going and it was just, my car got a pounding and was water dripping in?
No.
Or was I telling you about water dripping in the day before? I've never, I've never had a car that leaked in its roof. I better get that taken care of. Anyway, when we got there, it was very dark and it was hard to find a place to park. We had to park out in the tall grass. But what, when we got inside, it was worth it. I mean, I, I just, the event was just great. It was just interesting and and things were going on. The three things I'd like to mention, I think that you mentioned it also, this group of folklorico dancers, which are always a treat to watch, and and they had the wonderful twirling dress outfits, you know, with all this, all this color going on up there. And the, I think there were about, I think there were about six, six couples up there dancing for a while, and then they did dances that weren't in couples. It was, the other, the other entertainments were, I don't, I don't, I wasn't taking notes, so I I don't remember everything, but I I noticed that there were two groups where where students were playing instruments, and two bands, actually. And these were student entertainers in the the groups. And I just think it's wonderful to see these kids learn, learn how to do a, how to play a trombone in school in the music program in fourth grade, and then they continue to do that. And if it wasn't for that, a lot of kids who who want to be a part of a band come to school because it's music day.
I believe it was a PV High School band that was playing. Paharo Valley High School.
Oh, Paharo Valley High students. Oh, which which group? The, the one, one did kind of a combo thing. They were, and then the other one was something maybe that was march music, marching music. Anyway, I I enjoyed the whole thing. I've never found any event to be better than this because because of the entertainment. There was food there, but I kept getting it on my knees and thinking, oh, it's going to fall on the floor, it's going to fall on the floor. So I wasn't putting my attention in eating, because I didn't know what it was. But I'm sure it was very good. Anyway, we had fun, didn't we, Sue? Got back and we were relatively dry.
And she had a flashlight.
Oh, I have my, my wonderful flashlight. Oh, good. I have a tiny flashlight that can fit in my pocket if I'm left out over, after dark. It's important. Eight dollars and 95 cents at the Ace Hardware.
Thank you.
That's it for me. The rest of mine are medical and dental stuff. I'm looking at my calendar. Yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to report on. The rest of this stuff is.
Thank you, Sam.
Medical and dental. Okay.
So to to kind of continue the the theme that we've been having, I also went to the annual event, COE, I think it was well done. I really enjoyed just the company, the presence, the students, the food, everything. It was really good, definitely enjoyed it. I want to spend most of my time, my comments, talking about what's going on at the state level, specifically with the CCBE, CSBA. So as as I've been told, as far as I'm aware, CCBE is, so CSBA is the school, California School Board Association. And within that, there was a section, quote unquote, section, which is the CCBE that was specific to the county boards of education. And the reason why that that was done was because there's a lot less COEs than there are school districts, about 1,000, the school districts, and about 58.
About 1,000, the school districts, and about 58 COEs. And we're very unique to what we do, right? We're an appellate body. We do IDTs and look at districts' budgets. So what we do is very unique. So we have this, we had this section that kind of advocated for, you know, specifically for the needs of the county boards of education. And I enjoyed it because I was able to be a part of that. I was able to be a little bit more involved and specifically volunteered and was in a committee for policy, hearing what others, COEs across the state, what they, what they wanted, what they needed, and then presenting and advocating it at the level of the state. Well, at the end of last year, December 2023, CSBA decided that they were going to revoke the status of CCBE as a section, and it just stopped from one day to the other. It kind of came as a surprise and, and to too many people, including the ones that were involved with the CCBE. And the way that I understand is that there were other interest groups that were interested in having their own section, wanted to have their own. And by section, CCBE was, was a part of CSBA, but at the same time had its own bylaws, had its own statutes, had its own committees. So there were people that were interested in having that section. And that, what a section is or was isn't well-defined, isn't on the CSBA bylaws. So I think they, it was more easier for them to just get rid of it. And say, you know what? We're just gonna get rid of CCBE and just all fall under the CSBA umbrella. But the concern there is that will the voice of the COE be heard, right? Or will we be drowned by the different school districts? Yeah, we're a part of CSBA, but we also want CSBA to continue to advocate for everybody, districts and for the COEs as well. And that is a concern that many COEs have across the state in that we might lose that. Every single year, there's a March Governance Training, which I attended. And this is where I find out a lot of that information. And there's also a September Annual Conference that is very beneficial because again, it's specific to COEs. We hear from COEs all across the state, learn from one another, and then be able to implement some of those ideas, changes into our own counties. So there is a doubt whether that's going to continue or not, whether those services that we're going to get, if they're going to be there tomorrow. I know that MIG, the Masters in Governance Training that CSBA did for a really long time, I don't know how long it's been there, but only recently did they start focusing on the COE, again, because we have specific COE needs. And part of that was because we advocated, because we wanted, we told CSBA, hey, by the way, we need specific training to what our responsibilities are. So that's all up in the air and we don't know. We don't know if that's going to continue or not. And the way that the transition has, has happened has been less than ideal. I think it was abrupt and it was sudden. It caught a lot of people blindsided. So there's, there's issues of trust, concern that it wasn't done, that it could have been done more publicly with input of the COEs as well. And then, so there's a transition team that's currently in place. So they got rid of all the committees for CCBE. There's a transition in place, but that one is headed by CSBA. So they're the ones who are driving. They're the ones who are making those, those changes and deciding who is in, who is on that board. So even that transition itself is a little, you know, dubious and just in the way that it was set up. And then another concern that a lot of the COEs have across the state is that we pay dues to be in CSBA. This school districts pay dues to be part of CSBA. And the COEs pay dues to be part of CSBA, and they pay dues to be part of CCBE. So twice, we pretty much have to pay twice. And I don't think that's going away. So we're losing CCBE, but we're still going to pay twice for, to receive CCBE services. And if anything, that is just, it just reiterates the fact that it's the COEs I can add on, right? It's like, okay, the CSBA, we provide the services, but if you want something for CO, for county offices of ed, well, then you have to pay a little bit more. So we're looking, so we're asking for transparency as well in terms of the fee structure, what that looks like, so that we can understand, you know, and make sure that we're being charged something that's, that's, that's fair. And again, the whole question as to whether the CSBA will continue to advocate for our needs. There's a Senate Bill 1380 that's, that's currently in the works. And it's talking specifically about how charter renewals. And when we get a petition that comes to the county, we have, or when something is rejected, you know, from the local school district, then the COE has their recommendations. And then the petitioner has time to respond to those recommendations. But what the Senate bill wants to do is they want to give more power to this local school districts for them to also have, you know, time to be able to officially present and to advocate, you know, for, for themselves. So I think it's part of our due diligence, you know, as a board, as the staff, you know, that's, that's what we do. That's what, information that we look into. So there's that concern of, again, COE kind of losing some of our authority and kind of putting it more on the local school districts. Again, advocating CSBA for the districts versus the COEs. So, so a lot of letters have been going out and been sent to CSBA. Hopefully, they will hear us out, provide an opportunity to be able to express ourselves and to just make a good transition, you know, continue. Again, we all, we all have the same purpose and to, to serve and to help all of our students, make sure that they all succeed. So if we can all help each other out and feel like we are, gather that support, I think definitely goes, goes a long way. So that is the latest in terms of all of that. And another thing that I do want to mention that I kind of want us to have on our, we haven't really talked about very much, but I want to have it, I want, we need to have it on the back of our head, is charter schools. So AB 1505 completely changed the way that we can authorize or deny a charter school in terms of a petition that was denied by a local school district. And so what, and then of course COVID happened, so that kind of put everything on the sideline. But one of the big changes is that the state is no longer an LEA. You know, they cannot oversee a school district, a school that both the local school district and the county office of education denied. So there's not that many. I believe it's about 50, a little bit under, under, under that amount currently. But once those are up for renewal, what will happen is they'll go back to the school district for them to, to petition. And if that gets rejected, the way that I understand it, it goes back to this, to the state? Yeah, I believe it goes back to the state. And then if they.
Once it gets rejected from?
If they get rejected from the local school district, it goes to the state. And then if the state decides to approve it, then the school decides whether they want to be under the local school district or they want to be under the COE. That's the way that I understand it. I'm gonna stop talking because I don't want to spread any rumors. But I think it's something that we need to look at specifically because we do have a school in our county that is under the state. I think it's something that would be good to, to be prepared for.
Right, yeah. So Watsonville Prep is, is a state authorized charter school. I believe AB 1505, it goes from the district to the county. And if the county denies it, then that is the end of the process there. And I believe that if they do approve it, if the county does approve it, then the charter gets to decide if, which, which, which board will, will be their, their authorizer. At that point, I believe that's how it works. The state basically is no longer a part of the process, I believe. But we can, maybe if you would like, we could bring a summary of AB 1505. I believe we did. And we could provide that information because I think you're absolutely right. This is really important, especially if new charters are, are brought forth. We're gonna, we're gonna want to be able to, to follow that, that process.
And I don't know when that date's coming because as far as I can tell, it keeps getting pushed back, charter petition renewals, those dates of expirations. I feel like it was a year, then it's two, then it's three. I honestly don't know.
And I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood. I apologize. You were referring to when the renewal happens for the state. I apologize, I missed that part. So you were, you were referring to when Watsonville Prep gets, goes up for renewal, how that's going to move back from the state down to, so they could in fact be, they could choose to be under the county or under, under the school district. That's, that's correct. So there, and there is a good chance that they may decide to, they may request that they be under the county board. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks, that's my report.
Did you, are you on the CCBE slash CSBA? Did you call in and say I'd like to be a voice?
Yes, I reached out to them. I reached out to them, yep.
I appreciate you're doing all that. It's important for us to keep that connection. I didn't do a whole lot of direct school board business. The last month, I was pretty involved in the elections. It's a very satisfying and happy thing that every school finance measure in our county passed. Some of them needed 55, some needed 67%, et cetera, and they all met their thresholds. And I appreciate our voters for that. Some of my own candidates didn't win, but that's part of the process. The other big thing that I've been caught up in over the last several weeks is there's a emerging coalition of people, you know, who are trying to overcome some of the usual local disputes and conflicts about creation of more affordable housing. And we have an idea for a local revenue source. And, but there was some concern about its acceptability in the community. And so the group that's pushing this, which is a community group that emerged out of some discussions at the city of Santa Cruz last year, wanted to do a survey, but a survey of voters is an expensive proposition. And so they, they went to a local survey firm, ASR, who then sent them to me because I do research for them. And I have the capability to deploy some stuff software-wise that, that would otherwise be very expensive. So I quickly wrote some software to do a survey. We convened a group of people to design the questions, including sociologists and people that knew about how you pose questions in surveys. And we did phone calling to a select, random selection of voters. And we emailed a one-time-use invitation to the survey to a bunch of local voters. And so the reason I'm mentioning this, aside from that I'm totally caught up in it, is that one of the questions, the kinds of things you ask in surveys, one of the areas is if this, if this measures on the ballot, which kinds of things that it might help, that it might do, are appealing to you? And the one that scored the highest, and that's the reason I'm mentioning this, is affordable housing for local teachers. That was the one that had the highest score of all the alternatives, like local workforce or people that have to commute from out of town or things like that, the category of like, if this money, this affordable housing money were to go for X, you know, would you like it better? And when X was affordable housing for teachers, that scored the highest. So anyway, just thought I'd remind ourselves of this terrible economic situation, but that there's some positive, people, local people care about it. And care about teachers.
That's really interesting. Very interesting. Ed.
Yeah, nothing to share at this time. Thank you, present.
I'll try to be short. I did go to the community, annual report of the community. And I'll tell you one thing, I was impressed at the music selections of the Paharo Band. They were not typical at all. And I'm not a musician, but I think they were at a kind of a higher level than normal high schools. Attended the agenda committee. And then last week was the CSBA Legislative Action Week up at Sacramento. And I participated in the meeting with John Laird and one with Robert Rivas. He did not appear. His aide, Misty Padilla, who sends. Anyway. And the, we had talking points. I love the way CSBA has done this. Over, I mean, this is a change over the years. But we were to speak on Protecting Proposition 98, the proposed $8 billion maneuver sets a troublesome precedent. And they all reacted the same way.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we hear you. Remain focused on sustaining existing programs. SB 1315, addressing the significant number of reports required of local education agencies. And that evidently, there's a process going on right now where they're trying to gather up a list of these reports. And then there'll be a harder sell or ask. AB 2831, Office of Small School District Facilities in Construction. Because this is something that is, most small districts, which most of our county is that, we have no expertise nor money to do that. And then the placement of a public schools facility bond on the November 22 ballot. And I will comment on John Laird. I have never seen him. So, I mean, he talked a lot, but he is not optimistic. He was very, so I say it, there's, it's serious what's happening up there. Yeah. I mean, he's still right there fighting for us. But it's a serious situation going on with the budget up there in Sacramento. And that's it.
Can I make one, one comment? Several of you mentioned the annual event, the celebration. I want to give a huge shout out to Nick Ibarra, who was, really was the champion for that event. He, everybody, there was lots of people involved, Vernice and Andres and Audrey and a lot of people that were involved in it. But, but Nick really was the one that held this, this event and shepherded through. And so I just wanted to give a huge shout out to, to him. It was a great, I think the best ever, and it's going to continue to get better. So thank you, Nick.
So I have lost my. Yes. And these other events that are coming up look really good, too. And we'll get a list or reminder on all of those, I hope. Okay, I have lost my last page. Okay. Next scheduled, oh, ad hoc or standing committee reports. I don't think we have any at this point. And the schedule for our next regular meeting is April 18th here at 4:00 PM. Here, I adjourn the meeting.